Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, April the 11th, 2022 Business Meeting. I will call the meeting to order and say thank you to those that are here with us in person and welcome to those who are joining us live stream. If we will all stand for the presentation of colors and the National Anthem.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the Northwest Cabarrus High School Air Force JROTC program and their personnel includes Cadet Captain Lacy Wiley, Cadet Senior Airmen Journey Harris, Cadet Airmen First Class Aleah Pender, and Cadet Airmen Lindalva Prosper.
Right face, forward, march.
Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem were members of the Cox Mill High School Brass Chamber Ensemble, including Kayden Sambuco, Adam Schlemmer, Alex Acosta, Noah Fitzgerald, and Aiden Knudsen. The Director of the Cox Mill Band Program is Mr. Adam Singer. Thank you.
What a great performance by our Northwest Cabarrus High School ROTC program. Board members, we will begin with setting the agenda with 3.01. May I have a motion that the April 11th, 2022 Business Meeting Agenda be approved as presented?
Same.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now we will begin with our recognitions, 4.01, and we will have Mrs. Ronnie Boone, Director of Communications and Public Information, to the podium for our Impact Through Education Awards. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at AT Allen Elementary School and Mount Pleasant Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable, and I'd like to invite any Equitable representatives that are here this evening to join me. Thank you and welcome. Please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to you and to Equitable for your continued support and sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. We appreciate the fact that you take the time to help us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff members. So now on to tonight's awards. We'll begin with AT Allen Elementary School. And may I have the AT Allen Administrative Team come forward, please? Our first honoree from AT Allen Elementary School this evening is Elizabeth Clark. Would Elizabeth and her family please come forward? Elizabeth is a sweet classmate. She is polite and kind to everyone she meets. She's a great role model for her peers and works hard in everything she does. Even when no one is looking, she's always making the best choices. As a model student, she wants to do her best, never gives up, and consistently reaches her personal goals. Thinking about the impact Elizabeth has made at AT Allen brings a smile to any Cardinal's face. Elizabeth serves on the ATA Gardens Weekday Warriors Team. These dedicated students volunteer as leaders, cleaning, and completing special projects in the gardens during their recess time. Elizabeth also serves on the 5th Grade Market Garden Team assisting with the school's first ever summer plant sale. It has been an honor to watch this amazing student grow in maturity and leadership, and AT Allen is proud to present her with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations, good job.
And he's going to get a picture of you. Thank you. Our next honoree from AT Allen is Andrew Brito Solis. Would Andrew and his family please come forward? Okay, awesome. Hard worker and helper are common descriptors when Andrew's name comes up among the AT Allen community. Andrew is one of the kindest Cardinals in the school community. He is a sweet, respectful, responsible, and adorable young man. Andrew faces challenges daily and school is not easy for him, but he does not let barriers get in his way. Andrew has a growth mindset and works diligently to overcome hard things. Andrew demonstrates a great work ethic and gives his best in everything he does. When he has difficulties with academics, he advocates and speaks up for himself. He's constantly pushing himself and even asks for more problems to practice and reach for mastery. Andrew's desire to keep learning is inspiring and motivating for his fellow classmates. He's much like a sponge and wants to absorb everything around him. Andrew wants to learn and be successful, and the proof is seen through his actions every day. Andrew also serves on the ATA Gardens Weekday Warriors Team, volunteering in cleaning and completing special projects for the AT Allen Gardens during his recess time. Andrew serves on the 5th Grade Greenhouse Installation Team, which designs and maintains the greenhouses for the school's salsa garden plants. Andrew's maturity and leadership are inspiring. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award.
Congratulations. Good job.
Next, we will honor Mrs. Janet Childress. Would Mrs. Childress and her family come forward, please? Mrs. Janet Childress is an amazing asset to not only the AT Allen community but to Cabarrus County Schools as a whole. She is a trailblazer in the school garden realm, and the school feels lucky to have her. She has been pivotal in the school's annual Spring Title I Parent Outreach Night, collaborating with teachers to plan and facilitate a student showcase that highlights student inquiry projects connected to the school garden. The pandemic did not stop her. She helped plan and facilitate the bee inquiry connect collaboration and showcase. This month, students will showcase everything they have learned about bees in various ways. Mrs. Childress takes a K-5 interconnected curriculum approach to her program, and students benefit daily. Her reach goes beyond AT Allen and into Cabarrus County Schools. She is a teacher of teachers. She recently partnered with CCS by facilitating and outdoor teaching and learning professional development for other CCS teachers to grow their skill set. Earlier this year, she advocated and shared the benefits of school gardens with the CCS School Board. Janet Childress has such a positive impact on students at AT Allen. She immerses them in the science of gardening and exposes many to experiences they never would have had the opportunity to experience otherwise. Her ability to elevate the confidence of so many students by instructing and allowing them to have an important job in developing projects in the gardens is priceless. She shares her love of learning, and it is contagious. Mrs. Childress is a game changer and empowers students every day. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
And our final AT Allen honoree this evening is Ms. Michelle Lugo. Would Ms. Lugo and her family please come forward? Mrs. Lugo is all in. She consistently goes over and beyond her job description. Her work is her calling, and Cabarrus County Schools is fortunate to have her. As a district translator housed in the AT Allen community, she is a liaison, advocate, and voice for those who might not have one. Mrs. Lugo will contact, advocate, go on visits, and consistently partners with teachers and families to bridge the communication gap. Mrs. Lugo's heart is so big for the students at AT Allen. She truly cares for students and takes on many roles at times: mother, nurse, technology support, coach, and cheerleader, to see students and families through tough situations or to guide them to be a better student. Her work is invaluable to the staff and students at the school. She truly has a passion for the families she serves and diligently works to stay connected to the community. She always has a smile and positive words for students and staff. Mrs. Lugo works hard with the Hispanic community in multiple capacities across Cabarrus County Schools. She checks on students and families daily, not just at AT Allen, but across the county. During the pandemic, she was a stand-in-the-gap leader for CCS Hispanic families. Many days and nights, she helped families connect, solve problems, and advocated to ensure AT Allen Cardinals and other CCS students had the access and opportunity needed to do school, but more importantly, to help families stay connected. AT Allen is proud to present Mrs. Lugo with the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do.
Now we will move on to our students and staff recognitions for Mount Pleasant Middle School. I'd like to invite the Mount Pleasant Middle School Administrative Team to come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School is John Green. Would John and his family come forward? John is an 8th grade student who exhibits leadership, grit, and motivation. In his time at Mount Pleasant Middle, he has shown that he is courteous and dependable through his work in class and in extracurricular activities. In class, John is always working to the best of his ability by collaborating with peers, asking questions, and participating in class discussion. He's always willing to rise to challenges without complaining and is patient when helping other students. Although John is quiet, his actions speak volumes. He is a hard worker with a positive attitude. John is not only an integral part of the classroom, but he is also involved in extracurricular activities. John is an FFA member and competed in Envirothon for the past two years. This year, he serves as a student ambassador and has planned and taught Leader in Me lessons for his peers. He often takes initiative and always strives for his peers to learn something valuable from these lessons. John, whose favorite activity outside of school is working on cars, is a student who has an impact on other students through his leadership abilities and motivation inside and outside the classroom. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award.
Congratulations, good job.
Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School is Reagan Hilton. Would Reagan and her family come forward, please? Reagan Hilton is an asset to Mount Pleasant Middle School and a leader among her peers. She's helpful and kind to her classmates, and she can consistently be relied upon to assist other students while showing respect to everyone. She's a pleasure to have in a class, and her intelligence and humor make lessons enjoyable for students and teachers. In class, Reagan shows excellent dedication to her learning and consistently turns in high-quality and thoughtful work. During class discussions, she shows excellent critical thinking and often a deep grasp of class concepts. Her teachers can depend on her to add an insightful comment to a class discussion. She can see things from multiple perspectives and shows respect to many different ideas. Reagan also is involved in multiple activities that build and enhance the Mount Pleasant Middle School community. She's involved in FFA and led the Biotechnology Quiz Bowl team to a second-place finish in the state competition. She also is leading her Envirothon team, which moved on from regionals to states, and they will compete in the state competition at the end of April. She's also a member of the school soccer team. Her team spirit, intelligence, humor, and kind personality make Mount Pleasant Middle School a better school. Congratulations, Reagan.
Congratulations. Good job.
Our next honoree is Misty Little. Would Mrs. Little and her family please come forward? Misty Little is the definition of a collaborator, and she is one of the essential cornerstones to the Mount Pleasant Middle School team. She's always doing what is best for kids and leading by example in PLCs and MTSS meetings. She has and continues to be committed to student achievement and understands that the whole child must be taught and cared for in order to fully grow scholars in today's society. She asks the hard questions and advocates for all students. Misty works hard to hold teachers and students accountable so that the most vulnerable and struggling students receive what they need to succeed. She is a reliable resource and will stop at nothing to help both the students and the teachers at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Misty is described as the glue that brings it all together. She has worked very hard to organize the entire school's MTSS process and has made it manageable and effective. She spends a great deal of time working directly with students and finds ways to inspire and encourage them to grow and to make good choices. Mount Pleasant Middle School is proud to present Misty Little with this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And our final honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School this evening is Mrs. Tammy DeVito. Would Mrs. DeVito and her family come forward, please? Master organizer, chaos handler, caring, flexible, dedicated, loving, supportive, and encouraging are only a few of the terms used to describe Tammy DeVito. Tammy shows up to work each day, not just physically, but mentally and emotionally, to support all of the students and the teachers at Mount Pleasant Middle School. She has found a way to make one of the most stressful parts of education, testing, streamlined, simple, and manageable for the entire school. Tammy is always willing to go above and beyond in regard to her responsibilities by covering classes, helping in the media center, working with students, assisting in ISS, and anything in between. She has mastered multitasking and can make changes in the best interest of the entire school community on the fly. Tammy has proven time and time again that she is one of the school's greatest contributors to student success. She is definitely making an impact through education. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you do. Thank you guys for being here. Thank you and congratulations to all the winners. We will move to 4.02 for our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we'll have Dr. Kelly Withers, Deputy Superintendent, to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. It is my pleasure to introduce to you our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April. We always begin by extending our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued generosity and sponsorship. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for April is Brandy Story, a preschool teacher at Mary Frances Wall Center. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Story, her family, and any members of her school's administrative team to come forward. Last week, Ms. Story received her award from Mr. Vaughn and his prize patrol during a visit to her classroom. Tonight, we want to share the nomination one of Ms. Story's parents submitted about her. This year, our son is in Ms. Story's Zazzy Zebra class at Mary Frances Wall Center. The entire school is the most special place, but our son has thrived with Mrs. Story. She has gotten to know him, his strengths, and his challenges, and every day, he goes to his classroom feeling safe and loved. Having this wonderful preschool experience has set him up to continue to love school for a long time. As a parent, there is nothing better than knowing your child is in the best hands possible when they aren't in your care, and Mrs. Story has been exactly that for us this year. Mrs. Story, thank you for making your students' first school experience one that is positive, loving, and safe. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County's Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Congratulations. Thank you for all that you do. And next, we will have 4.03. We'll have Mr. John Legrand, Chief Operations Officer, to the podium for our Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Dr. Karpicki, this evening, I am very excited to announce that along with our partners at Great Wolf Lodge, we are implementing a new monthly award called the Everyday Hero Award. This award will be awarded monthly to an employee within auxiliary services, which includes our Kids Plus, Facilities Maintenance Department, Construction Department, our Student Nutrition Program, and Transportation. This award is intended to recognize the outstanding behind-the-scenes work of employees in the auxiliary services that often goes unnoticed. As we all know, there is great work being done daily that should and will now be recognized publicly each month at our Board of Ed Business Meetings. Unfortunately, unable to join me tonight at the podium is Angie Brown from Great Wolf Lodge. She will plan to join us next month to talk a little bit more about this sponsorship. We are very grateful for her and Great Wolf Lodge, which has generously provided complimentary water park passes for four to each month's recipient of our Everyday Hero Award. With us tonight is this month's recipient of the Everyday Hero Award, Mr. Frankie Jones. Mr. Jones is a bus driver and was nominated by Mount Pleasant Middle School Assistant Principal Logan Barrier. Mrs. Barrier had this to say about Mr. Jones. "I want to take a moment to share good news that I hope will warm your heart and make you proud of our school system. How a bus driver chooses to act and treat his or her students inevitably drives the student's overall attitude and vibe for the rest of the day and night, which directly impacts the student's overall academic success. One of our bus drivers, Mr. Frankie Jones, is making a tremendous amount of positive change for Mount Pleasant Middle School. Earlier this year, Mr. Jones took over one of the most troublesome buses and immediately gained the trust and admiration of all students. Mr. Jones goes out of his way to learn the students' names. He gives each student a smile and a fist bump upon entering and exiting the bus, and he tells them that he cares about them and he wants them all to have a good day. These small acts of kindness build upon each other and have tremendously transformed the culture and environment on this bus. Students on his bus can be observed each morning smiling and laughing when exiting his bus. Each afternoon, they literally scream 'Mr. Frankie' and run, as I remind them to walk, to board his bus. I cannot emphasize to you all how much this group of students needs this love. Mr. Frankie is beloved at Mount Pleasant Middle School, and we are so grateful for him. I would personally like to say, 'Well done, Mr. Jones, and congratulations on truly being an everyday hero.'" So I'd like to call up Art Whitaker, our Director of Transportation, and Mr. Frankie Jones.
We have a plaque for Mr. Jones and his complimentary water park passes for, and I want to thank Mr. Jones for your service to our Cabarrus County schools.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. That was great. Okay, Board members, we will move to 4.04. We will have Mr. Brian Tyson, Director of Athletics, for our state athletic champions both fall and winter. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. We are here for some exciting recognitions tonight, and we are going to recognize our fall and winter state champions. We've had a great fall and winter season and expect a great spring season as well, as we've had 12 separate state championships won this year by Cabarrus County Schools. And first of all, we'll have Northwest Cabarrus come in. And first of all, we'll have Northwest Cabarrus come in. We have a few athletes that couldn't be here tonight for skill training reasons and for spring sport reasons, but we got as many as we could here, and maybe we can get some of the others back at another time as well. One of them is Matt Lucky from Concord High School. He could not be here tonight, and Matt won his fifth state championship in swimming, won the 100-yard breaststroke again for the third time, and also won the 200 individual medley this year, and he's committed to Northwestern University for next year. So Matt, if he's watching this on YouTube later on, as we know all teenagers watch board meetings on YouTube when they get home, then Matt can, we wanted to recognize you as well. With me tonight, I have two state champions here. I have Harrison Ranier. Harrison won the 3A championship in swimming in the 200-yard freestyle with a school record time of 1 minute and 38.33 seconds. He also placed second in the state in the 100-yard butterfly at 48.38 seconds. And like I said, both are school records, and he is committed to Auburn University for this coming fall. And if that wasn't enough, Harrison also got involved with the 400-yard freestyle relay team, which I also have Justin Gould here with us tonight as well. Justin is a state champion on that 400-yard freestyle relay team that won in three minutes and 12.6 seconds. And the team also finished second in the state in the 200 medley relay, and Northwest Cabarrus was also the 3A runner-up as a team. So these guys did an awesome job, and they were coached by Vera Smith, and she is here tonight as well representing these folks. So congratulations, guys, and we're proud of you. You guys shaking hands? I was in the hallway. No? Okay. All right. Pictures. Y'all will pose.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations, guys.
Marcus down here before, because he's a two-time state champion. Marcus's teammate, Jackson, couldn't be here tonight, and Jackson is also a two-time state champion as well. And Jackson won the 3A wrestling in the 120-pound class with a 32-0 record this year. Marcus is a two-time state champion, which is a senior, in the 132-pound class for 3A wrestling. Marcus was 36-2 this year and has an outstanding career record of 163 wins and only 11 losses. So they are coached by Ed Masterton, and Marcus, we're glad to have you down here again and proud of you for winning that state, second state championship.
Hey, Brian. Key up. Key up. Key the mic. Key the mic.
Yeah, I'm loud anyway. I got my coach voice going on.
I wouldn't have caught it otherwise.
Right. So next, I have Mount Pleasant High School. So these two gentlemen were runner-ups in the state last year and overcame that and actually won the state championship this year, so quite an honor. Perseverance there and just two outstanding years. And I have David McKeachern. David, raise your hand. David is a sophomore, won the 2A wrestling in the 126-pound weight class, was 44-9 this year, and like I said, was a state runner-up last year. Kyler Pickard is a senior, and Kyler won the 2A state championship in the 170-pound weight class, and Tyler was 50 wins and three losses this year. And Tuck Kyler is committed to Belmont Abbey to wrestle next year, and they were coached by Coach Jaren Spradely. Proud of you guys. Congratulations. Next, we have Hickory Ridge High School. These ladies won the 4A indoor track championships, and not only one state championship, they won two state championships while they were there. So we're extremely proud of them. I have Anaya Woodruff, and Anaya is committed to Howard University next year. I have Jayla Woodruff. I have Nina Dominique, and I have Abigail Thomas, which is going to Northeastern University. These ladies won the 4x200 relay in a time of 1 minute and 42 seconds, and the 4x440 relay in 3 minutes and 59.82 seconds. And we're probably going to see them again when we come back for spring state championships because they're all doing the same thing in spring, so we look forward to seeing that as well. And they were coached by Alicia Williams, and we're proud of her for her work with these kids. Congratulations. Proud of them. You guys might recognize Madison here. Madison, we're very proud of her for winning the 2A women's tennis championship, state championship this year, and she is only a sophomore. And Madison was the state runner-up last year as a freshman. Madison was 22-0 this year. She was the Conference Player of the Year for the second year in a row. She's all state, she's all region, she's pretty much all world. So she may forego her last two years at JM Robinson and go straight pro. I don't know. It's a decision you'll have to make this summer. Right? So we're proud of you, Madison, and for what you're doing, and she was coached by Ryan Hodges, and we're looking forward to big things in the future as well from you. Some congratulations.
Congratulations.
And last, JM Robinson's men's basketball team won the state championship as well, and they had a lot of members that could not be here for various reasons, mainly playing other spring sports. So we're going to get them on the books to come in for next month, and we'll recognize them then. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Again, congratulations to all of our winners. We had a lot of stuff going on this past season to be proud of, these kids. We will move on to 4.05, Young Authors, and we will have Dr. Crystal Hill, Chief Academic Officer, and Ms. Emily Francis, the current CGRA president. And you can tell us what that is, if you'll please key the mic.
Good evening, Board members. I am pleased to introduce the Greater Cabarrus State Young Authors winners for 2022. So congratulations to the following students who were selected as the North Carolina Reading Association Young Authors state winners. The theme for the 2122 Young Authors Project was Building and Designing the Future. Young authors were encouraged to write about ways they can impact the future by their actions, how engineering and buildings have impacted their past, present, and future, and how they can build relationships or build bridges to mend relationships. State-winning authors will be featured in the North Carolina Reading Association's Young Author State Book of 2022, and the county-level winners will also be featured and published in a book by the Greater Cabarrus Reading Association. And we are very pleased to have Emily Francis, who is the current CGRA president, to help present the awards this evening. And we will begin with Cox Mill Elementary School. Just Cox Mill. Or all of them. That's fine. They can all come. That's fine. That's fine. They can all come. Does it make it easier for you? Okay. Anya. Anya, go stand over there. Nope, 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 nope. He's, she's first. Okay. These two friends are Cox Mill Elementary. We have Abby Murphy from Cox Mill Elementary School and Vihan Naga from Cox Mill Elementary School. And our art winner is Alan Shi from Cox Mill Elementary School. Congratulations to these students. Say thank you to the board.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations.
All right. Our next student is from Harold E. Winkler Middle School, and I do not believe she is here, but we will honor her. We have Michelle Aldridge. Our next, thank you. Our next student from Harrisburg Elementary School is Anya Silva. You can turn around and smile, and they'll get your picture. And then turn around and say thank you to the board. Congratulations. All right. Next, we have Connor West from Pitt School Elementary School. Congratulations. Say thank you to the board.
Good job.
All right. Next, we have several students from Weddington Hills Elementary. We have William Dobbs, Anika Swinson, Charlotte Shortle, and Matthew Plot. Say thank you to the board.
Congratulations. Good job.
And next, we have Odell Elementary School. Okay, Odell Elementary School, I do not believe is with us tonight, but we'd like to recognize Sophia Fisher and Caitlin Bosbe. And our final winner this evening, we have one more from Harrisburg Elementary, who was an art winner. Come on in, Zoe. And this is Zoe Arrington.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to 4.06 for the North Carolina VEX World Qualifying Teams. We'll have Mr. David Parisi to the podium, please. Is Mr. Parisi with us tonight? There we go.
Board members, Dr. Kupicki, and our entire Cabarrus County community, tonight I have the distinct privilege of presenting to you five of the nine Cabarrus County Schools' competitive VEX Robotics teams that have qualified to compete at the 2022 VEX World Championships. The three JM Robinson teams that also qualified could not be with us tonight due to a scheduled VEX Worlds virtual judging interview taking place at JM Robinson High School as I speak. The CC Griffin VRC team qualified as conducting a STEM Fest tonight on their campus this evening. These teams qualified out of thousands of teams throughout the world and will be traveling to Dallas, Texas to compete against hundreds of teams from roughly 30 nations. Please join me in recognizing, in the Elementary VEX IQ Division, Caitlin Hill, Lucy Zhang, Maisy Bofo, Vai Bahav Nair, Diego Ramirez, Cameron Donovan, Connor Edwards, Taha Ibrahim, Braylon Brody, Labib Farak, Pradeem Moparti, Coach Kristen Trong, and Coach Michelle Thank you.
Congratulations.
Also, in the Elementary VEX IQ Division, Weddington Hills Elementary Wildcat Robotics Team Protocol and Wildcat Robotics Team Circuit, Madden Leedy, Kalen Segovia, Ava Adam, Henry Smith, William Dobbs, Anderson Highsmith, Henry Hawkins, and Grady Tucker, and Coach
Congratulations. Good job.
In our Middle School VEX IQ Division, Harris Road Middle School Patriot Robotics, Shri Shan Redi Loka, Ishan Redi Loka, Jackson Borg, Neil Goyal, Rohan Chalaborte, and Zain Fatima, Coach Lolitha Karthik, and Principal Stephen Buchhart.
Congratulations. Good job.
Again, Middle School VEX IQ Division, Hickory Ridge Middle School Raging Robotics, Anjali Anchor Ready, Shrivali Balaguri, Madison Evernathy, Nikhil Kabed, and Coaches Elena Moore and Brenda Eason. And congratulations to all. Good luck in Dallas. Make North Carolina proud.
Congratulations. Good job, guys. Okay, Board members, we will move to the approval of minutes, 5.01. May I have a motion that the board approve the minutes for the open session meetings for February the 7th, 2022, and February the 14th, 2022, March 1st, 2022, March 5th, 2022, March 7th, 2022, March 14th, 2022, and March 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell and a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Now, we will move to items under number 6.01. We'll begin with the Board Chair and Superintendent and Attorney comments, and I would just like to read quickly, I'm not sure how many were able to attend the Career Connections Day at the arena on the 5th, but it was a really, really great turnout. Everybody had a really good time. A lot of kids showed up looking for resumes and job performance and scouting out businesses. It was really, it was a great day. Over 250 people came together last week at the Cabarrus County Career Connections Day on April the 5th to invest in our students' future. Almost 800 high school juniors and seniors could visit the 72 Business Expo booths hosted by local businesses and organizations to explore available careers in Cabarrus County and surrounding areas and learn how to achieve them. Many had real-life opportunities, internships, apprenticeships, summer employment, part-time jobs, and full-time employment available for students. Chris Elmore, entrepreneur, musician, professor, author, speaker, and stampy dresser, shared secrets for success on the job with students, and many other dynamic speakers provided insights for job hunting, leadership, and entrepreneurship, and much more. I would like to thank the Cabarrus County Education Foundation for organizing the event and the incredible resource partners who helped make it successful, the Cabarrus EDC, Central Illinois Workforce Development Board, the Chamber Leading Business in Cabarrus, and Rowan Cabarrus Community College. I want to thank the CTE staff for the amazing job they did in preparing our students. We heard so much great feedback on how professional our students were. Thank you all for a job well done. Also, we would like to say thank you for our SROs being with us here tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to 6.02 to Dr. Kupicki for superintendent comments.
Thank you. So I would echo the comments just made by our Chair, Mrs. Grimsley. The Cabarrus County Career Connections Day was outstanding. All those mentioned had a key part in making sure that it was successful. It was really great to see a lot of the businesses out there, a lot of the people interacting, a lot of our students from Cabarrus County enjoying that particular event. So I do thank all those that Mrs. Grimsley has mentioned. Earlier today, we had the pleasure of hosting State Superintendent Catherine Truitt as she visited two of our schools, Royal Oaks School of the Arts and Concord High School. She had the opportunity to speak to our teachers, students, and administrators, and she observed students at both Royal Oaks and Concord High School, working through a lot of the integrated arts programs, the IB program, the Public Safety Academy, and many other opportunities to engage in kids, including our IB program as well. She also learned about the jobs for America's Graduate Program, which is in a community schools program. And while we were there today, the Communities in School Program donated $10,000 to Concord High School. So we appreciate that donation and the support that they gave to Concord High School and to our students. It was very, it's always nice to be awarded some extra finances and to help to support some of those programs. So we thank them very much for that. I'd like to congratulate also our two principals, Melody Marsh at Royal Oaks School for the Arts and her assistants, Mrs. Danielle Lucas, and Dr. Adam Arbuck and his assistants at Concord High School, Ms. Chrissy Rotan, Ms. Janice Witherspoon, and Mr. Jeremy Hoshin. Their leadership was clear today as we walked through the buildings and saw a lot of engaged students. And one of the things that the state superintendent did comment at the end of the session when she kind of regrouped with us for a summary presentation was the fact that she was very impressed by our teachers, the level of engagement that she saw, and the programs that she witnessed and observed. There were a lot of other people that came with her this afternoon. I'm not going to mention everyone, but it was impressive to see the level of engagements and the, the great stuff that our, our teachers are doing in the classroom with their kids. And it's really nice to have someone else come in and observe that and then comment on. It was the very first thing they said that they were impressed with our teachers. So to all of our teachers and our staff and our principals and your leadership, I thank you very much. It's great to go out and brag on the things that we do, and it's wonderful to have people come in. I'd also like to thank the board today because they showed up and at various times during the day to support those programs and engage and, and be part of that as well. So it's nice to see your Board of Education taking time on their busy day to spend some time in our schools and to also observe some of the things that are going on in the classroom. When they're making decisions, they're not just making decisions without being invested and seeing what's going on in the classroom. So I thank them for that. I'd like to commend a couple of our Cabarrus County administrators on recently, on recently receiving awards. Dr. Erin Anderson, Principal at Harrisburg Elementary School, was recognized by the University of North Carolina at Charlotte during its International Women's Day celebration. Dr. James Davis, Principal at WM Urban Elementary School, received the 2022 North Carolina Association for Middle Level Education Higher Education Professionals to Watch Award and the North Carolina Association for Middle Level Education Higher Education Distinguished Service Award. So congratulations to both of them. And also to Dr. Mary Beth Roth, the Chief Student Services and Compliance Officer, as she received her recognition as an administrator to watch from the North Carolina Middle Level Educators Association. So congratulations to all of them. We appreciate their dedication. And again, it just speaks to the excellence that is here when outside organizations are acknowledging and awarding on the folks that we engage with every day. We know how great they are. It's just really nice to see others come in and, and make that acknowledgement as well. So congratulations to them. And lastly, I just want to remind everyone that we have spring break coming up, April 15th, which is this Friday. We will be closed and we will reopen again on April 25th. So we close on Friday. We are off all of next week. And I wish everyone a very restful, happy spring break. That's been well deserved. I'm sure everyone's looking forward to some rest and some enjoyment over the next couple of days. So I wish everyone a happy rest and a good spring break. Now I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Withers, who is going to talk a little bit about our allotment process this year. Dr. Withers?
Good evening, board. Again, we're going to provide an overview of how we have begun the allotment process with our staff. Our goal was to staff our schools equitably and transparently in order to meet the needs of all of our students. We did have a team of people here working together to prepare that. We also have some principals in the back of the room who are here if you have any questions for them about how this process went for them as well, or questions about the allotment process in general. But, so I'm really here on behalf, Carol Herndon and Marion Bish did a tremendous amount of work to get ready for this process along with Michael Williams and Megan Williams from HR, Ben Allred, Mary Beth Roth, and Sarah Reeves, representing the three grade spans to give us insight and information as we started this process. We started with a process that I'll talk about on the next slide, but then we held school allotment meetings, which meant that the people that you see here, Carol Herndon, Marion Bish, Michael Williams, myself, and then one of the representative grade spans, met with every principal over the course of a week and a day. We had to reschedule one, but we were able to get 44 allotment conferences done within six days. So a lot of conversation went into that. Teacher allotments for us are based upon ADM or our Average Daily Membership. You've heard that before. We use projections, and that is Francis Lane, who you're all familiar with, helps us with that, along with the state projections. The state projections are usually a true projection of just bumping up grade level to grade level, and then an estimation of what kindergarten is going to look like. We also use, Francis Lane is a wealth of information on what is coming into our district from the sense of growth in different areas. So Carol Herndon and Dr. Bish and I all looked at those numbers and made an ADM estimate for each of our schools. And then we also use an at-risk classification. And what that means is we divided our schools into three different categories, either low risk, moderate risk, or high risk. And we used our free and reduced lunch numbers to help with that. And basically, we had to go back to pre-pandemic in order to take a look at that. Then we looked at the data as we have gone through the pandemic. As you know, during the pandemic, our free and reduced lunch numbers are not accurate because of the free feeding program for all students. We didn't have the same level of application participation. So we compared numbers over a three-year period to look and see that. So for a low-risk school, that was less than 50% of their students received free and reduced lunch. Moderate risk was 50 to 75%, and high risk is 75%. We want to put our resources into our students equitably and make sure that we're supporting those that need us the most. So when you look at this chart on your screen, you will see the low-risk schools have class-size targets, each group does, but class-size targets, as you know, we have K-3 legislation that tells us what our class sizes are, K-3. The rest of them are the state formulas in low-risk categories of how the state allot teachers, meaning that for every 24 students in grade six, they give us a teacher or the funding for a teacher. I wish they gave us the teacher too, but they don't usually provide those. They give us the funding for the teacher. And so we have to use those formulas as our base. So that was our low risk. And then we added or adjusted for moderate risk and high risk. Basically, what you'll see is we lowered class sizes as risk increased. We lowered class-size targets as risk increased. Again, keep in mind that in K-3, those state targets are required. Everything else is a suggestion. That's how they fund us. But as you know, as you go into upper grades, middle, and high school, you will see class sizes fluctuate based on electives or other things that, programs that schools choose to use. In addition, after that, we reviewed how that would look for each of our schools. So we took their current head count. Megan Williams, who works in HR, is masterful at keeping up with that, and she provided us great information. So she gave us the current head count at each school, meaning how many actual teachers did they have versus, as Carol Herndon likes to say, how many pure math teachers. So if we just divided out the ADM by these targets, how many teachers should they have? And we compared those with that allotment team to see what kind of impact would that have on a school if we had to lose or gain teachers. And, and you can do that either way. In some of our schools that might gain teachers, they literally are almost out of space to gain teachers in them. So we had to take a look at what that might be, what that might mean. And then we gave an initial allotment spreadsheet to every principal on March the 25th. So we had a pre-meeting with them. We gave them the spreadsheet that showed them the pure math and our initial ask of whether they were staying the same, increasing, or decreasing in staff. After that is when we had the collaborative conversations. So after they had that information and had some time, just a couple of days to process that information, we went back and had an allotment meeting individually with every principal. So again, Carol Herndon, Marion Bish, myself, and one of the grade span representatives, as well as Michael Williams, met with every principal. And during those allotment meetings, we talked about what the math yielded, what that current impact was, and then they were able to share their story about what they needed in their schools. As you know, Cabarrus County is heavily invested in a very successful program choice opportunity for students. And program choice is a great opportunity for our students, but also has staffing needs that have to be there. The easiest one to share an example of that would be at Royal Oaks School of the Arts. By the pure math formula, they would only earn about two and a half encore teachers. But in a school of the arts, you need more than two and a half art encore teachers in order to meet their needs. So they have strings, they have theater, they have dance, in addition to the visual arts. And so we had to make sure that we were able to fund that appropriately. So we listened to all 44 principals tell us about their schools and what they needed, and we tried to create those unique staffing formulas for each of those programs to make sure that we were staffing them appropriately so that they could meet the needs of their students and the programs that they have. Once we heard all 44 of those conversations, the team met again for a couple of hours and looked at those requests and made sure that we could come up with formulaically, what is this going to look like? How many teachers do we need to support a dual-language program? How many teachers do we need to support an IB program? And we layered that on top of that base allotment that you were familiar with or just saw from that actual state formulas. The final allotments went out last Wednesday, April the 6th, and we will continue to monitor enrollment. Because we do have high growth in areas, we did use some aggressive growth projections from Francis Lane's data. So we will continue to monitor that, and we have certain schools that obviously are on our radar for sure, and we'll work closely with our principals. Sarah Reeves was talking that it's on her calendar to check every two weeks with some of our elementary schools. So we have to monitor it that closely and that often because they may need additional teachers if our growth projections are actually met. And then our next step is to review all of the other positions. So we did assistant principals, teachers, and encore teachers, which are your elective teachers, your arts teachers in elementary school, middle, and high. Those are all in a core allotment. Our next step will be to review additional positions. So beyond that administration and classroom teachers and encore teachers, we'll look at our clerical staff, our custodial staff, our EC and ESL, CTE teachers. Some of that work is already, is already in progress. Carol Herndon began a lot of this work back in late January, so we've been continuing that conversation. Our goal is at the end that there will be a master spreadsheet for every school that tells the staffing from every department, regardless of how it's funded, all on one sheet, so that someone could pull it and know exactly how many staff members were there in each area. And how that is funded is obviously based on the area that they are in, but that we would have that as our starting point for the conversation every year, so that as our ADM changes, we know what the picture looks like at the school and can make adjustments, and we know the programs that are offered there. So again, if you have any questions for me or for any of our principals that are here, we would be glad to answer any of those for you.
Dr. Withers, I have just one question. If you could clarify for me, were any programs eliminated through this process?
No, sir.
So all the programs that existed before the process still exist now?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, I will start with discussions or comment questions. Ms. Adcock?
Thank you so much for the information and just for the work and the effort that went into this. I really like this because it helps us really meet the needs of every single student, which lines up with our vision and our mission for our school system. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
And again, I thank you also, and I know a lot of work and time went into it. And I think you said, I mean, made the comment, but two, will it tell where the funding come from? Because I think that maybe between transition, between employee, I mean, staff changes, maybe some of the funding was maybe ESAR funding? And, and that will this tell if it was ESAR funding? Because all of us are aware that that funding is going to go away in three years. So if it goes away, I mean, really, that funding should not have been used because you do, I mean, our person knows. You should not use funding that's going away for reoccurring expenses. And so that will tell us that, so we will know that?
Yes, ma'am. So, yes, ma'am. So within our current head count, again, Megan Williams in HR was very clear with us the number of staff members and who was funded through our ESAR funding. And we had that conversation with our principals as they came in about the ESAR-funded positions and the fact that we will start to make decisions and have conversations about that in the next year in the allotment conferences. That conversation will become a real conversation of what is our plan for the people that are in these positions.
Okay. But thank you again. Thank, thank everybody that was involved with that, because I know it's very difficult.
Ms. Blackwell?
So I'm just going to echo the same thing and just say I know that there was a lot of work that went into this, and we really appreciate everyone being able to do that. This, this information is completely vital to what we do. So thank you so much.
Mr. Farr?
Yeah, I'll just say thanks for all the hard work. And only Dr. Kupicki asked a question. I was going to ask about programs. So that's always good to know that we're not going to cut out anything. So thanks.
You're welcome. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, so thanks for the presentation. I do appreciate that. So the chart didn't say anything about PLC or Opportunity School. We know those don't follow these classics, class sizes. Can you talk about that?
That is correct. It does not follow a class-size formula. The state doesn't have specialized formulas for certain schools. So we had to work specifically looking at their current head count and talking with their principals about what they needed, and then we allotted based on that. And we were in line. I do not believe either of those schools, the PLC or the Opportunity, gained or lost any teachers. They were able to continue their programs with the staffing they have currently.
Okay, how many schools lost teachers or how many gained?
I'd have to go back and look at the spreadsheet to know exactly how many lost or gained. What I will tell you is if you think about our middle schools, our middle schools lost teachers, but it's because a new school is opening. So they really shifted teachers. So we're not sending staff home when we say we lost teachers. We have vacancies for teachers. And again, like Roberta Road opening makes teachers have to move. So when you look at the spreadsheet, for example, Harris Road, which I think Mr. Bookhart's here, he lost teachers. On the spreadsheet, teachers are moving to other locations.
Lost students too, or estimating moving students?
Sure. And so our elementary schools, the ones of those, we had more gain in elementary than our other two areas because we have increased growth and ADM projections in our elementary schools. They're still continuing to grow and go up. And then our high schools were a little bit of a mixed bag of whether they were up or down, depending on size, depending on current allotments and programs.
So what are our projections for next year? How many teachers do we anticipate having more than we have now?
Is it 17? I think 17 was the number that we went up.
So you have 17 to reallocate somewhere?
17 teachers went, yeah, and increased.
To include in the pool of?
Yes.
And I think the last question was, how many locally funded teachers do we have?
65 certified staff. That's not, that can include certified instructional support, not just teachers. I don't have the teacher number off the top of my head.
And how do we, how do we allocate those locally paid teachers? Do we know? Is that part of the overall funding or is it specific to certain schools? Is that part of the overall funding or is it specific to certain schools?
It's not specific to certain schools. It's overall funding.
Because these are additional positions we wouldn't, we wouldn't have.
That is correct. If we look at these class sizes, that is correct.
So ultimately, did we lower the class size? I mean, is that what the goal was?
Well, if you look at moderate risk and high risk, theirs class sizes are lower. So when you have schools that fall into that category, if you, you would have teachers that don't fit the state funding formula there. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sandich?
So just a couple of questions for me. First of all, thank you for doing all of this hard work. It sounds like it took forever, but you look like you were the woman for the job, so you got it. So the questions I have, so when you talk about at the end that you'll kind of reevaluate as time goes on, did that include possibly new programs?
Sure, absolutely. As new programs are added or as student growth occurs, we will have to look at that.
Okay, okay. And then when I think about the virtual academy, and I know there's parameters around it, and correct me if I'm wrong, I would think that you would be able to have more students because it's virtual. And I just, I don't understand, is there some advocacy needed there or, you know, what, what can we do? Because that's how I look at it.
They do have more students. They can handle more students, I think. Yep, he's here. Because he's one of our unique programs, and we worked really hard with him and his staffing because he has some innovative ideas and how to work through that. But they can handle more students. So there's not a beautiful allotment formula for virtual schools. As you know, the pandemic caused the number of virtual schools to explode. The state wasn't really ready for that, so there wasn't a beautiful formula. I still don't think they've come up with that formula. But again, similar to Opportunity or PLC, we work with the principal to say, what do you have? What do you need? And so the enrollment numbers have gone down in elementary, so you may have some teachers shifted to other places. And he also has some innovative ideas of things that we can do to use our virtual teachers to help with vacancies and other ideas that we'll share with you guys soon in an update.
And my last question may be a little tricky to explain, but so what do those meetings look like? Like 44 meetings, I'm just putting in my, like, what is that? What does that look like?
There were lots of chocolate and, no, I'm just kidding. So they could come up if they wanted to and share, but basically, we went into the superintendent's conference room, and Carol, Marion and I, and Michael sat still all day while principals rotated in. And then the grade span, so Sarah Reeves was with us for elementary, Ben was with us, Alred was with us for high school, and Mary Beth Routh for middle school. So they came in and we went over just the spreadsheet, the pure math of what that looked like. And then we asked them to explain. Our people that were representing our grade spans did terrific work with our principals to help them prepare for how that impacts their master schedules. And so they had already had a lot of that conversation in the front. So they were able to come in and say, because I have example program, Royal Oaks was the one that I used, I have additional teacher needs beyond what the allotted formula says. In some cases, those teachers were already on their campuses and they were being paid for and through varied funding sources. So we tried to capture all of that, to your point, on one spreadsheet so that the allotment really makes sense and matches what's actually in their building.
Gotcha. So this process is the same every year?
Well, this is the first year we've done it this way.
Oh, okay. But you guys are making the mold. Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, we were hoping to, again, have that time for that collaborative conversation for principals to come in. And they did a phenomenal job, the ones that are here and the ones that aren't here. They're representing their peers, being able to advocate for their schools, and that's what principals are supposed to do. So they come in to give us their best shot for their school and what that school needs, and then we take it back and look at the whole district and make sure that we're making the best decisions for all of our kids.
That's great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Dr. Withers, if I may, I want to, I'd like our principals to come up, if you would, please. I know how much you're going to enjoy this. And I have not, and it's fair to say, I have not spoken to any of these folks before or after this process, but I'm very aware as to what went on. But if you would briefly, and I want to emphasize the word briefly, but if you would just, because I know there are many of you here, but I would just like some feedback on your comments as to the process this year for the allotments, what your thoughts were on that. So you just briefly comment on it, and that's it.
I would say this year, the process was enjoyed a lot, a lot better because of, we got to go through and look at our numbers and kind of figure out what we needed as a school. We met with the team and kind of, they shared with us what they were going to offer us for the allotments. And then we got to share kind of like why we needed more teachers or what we're looking at. Like you said, it's more than just numbers. Sometimes you look at straight numbers, it says one number. When you look at what our programs are, where our kids are at, what the schools are, it offers a lot more than what we actually need. I'd say probably about the process I've enjoyed the most is the fact that it was an open dialogue where they listened and kind of heard what we needed and what we needed as a school and why we needed it and kind of gave us more feedback based off of that.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Now before, and I mean this about all of our folks, but Ken's in front right now, I will tell you that this gentleman in front of you has many great ideas from a virtual standpoint as to how we can expand and use our academy. Everyone you see here and all of our administrators are fantastic, and I hate to single people out, but I'm going to. But I had some great conversations with Ken Simeon at different times this year, and I can tell you that he's got some great ideas for virtual academy and how to make sure we're helping kids in a lot of different ways. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you. So I think the biggest thing to echo Mr. Hobbs is just the transparency behind it and just being able to talk through what you needed with your program. So again, we're one of those unique programs that Dr. Withers talked about that our staffing, the math-wise, looked one way, but we were able to talk through what we actually needed to complete our program and make our program what it is and continue to expand it and really work with the rest of the district to help the district with vacancies and different parts with that. And that was tremendously helpful to be able to just speak to that and work through that. And, you know, got a partial answer that day and said, yes, we're going to get back to you on that because we need to make sure that we have everything, right? And that was the best part about it was it was back to it the next day, right? It wasn't a week later, two weeks later, it was, yes, now we have this and we can do it. So that was a positive thing, just to be able to do that from a unique standpoint from our program.
I just have one question, and I'm just trying to understand the numbers for virtual academy because when I look at this, it says same as low risk, but I think you are able to take more kids than the low-risk schools. So help me understand how you get to that number.
Sure. So some of us, like within the K-2 span, we have the class size limits that we need to adhere to with the state. And then the other ones, we look at based on our current enrollment. So what we're able to enroll in those classes. And yes, we can take a few more in some of those classes. It just depends on the class and how much face-to-face time they're getting on that screen is the biggest part about it. So at the high school level, you know, we can take quite a bit more just because a lot more of those students are more independent as opposed to when you have a fourth or fifth grader there, a lot less independent, even though we're trying to push them in that direction to be independent. You still have to kind of have those class sizes a little lower to make sure you get that one-on-one attention with those students.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Carpenter, just Kia.
One other question. You know, when we first set the academy up, did we set a cap number on that academy when we first set it up?
So initially, we had an idea of a cap, but there was no cap on that when we were first started.
Okay, I didn't know if the state set us up with one or if we set you up.
Nothing I'm aware of.
What, what, what's your number right now?
So we're at 375 right now.
375? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We trying to give you more kids. I'm just playing.
So at Harris Road, I'm one of those schools that Dr. Withers talked about with the aggressive growth, but also we were caught up in the realignment, as you know, losing about 250 students. So I was ready to come into those meetings guns blazing with information and data, but Kelly and her team really made it transparent and clear as to what our needs were. They kind of listened to me and actually came back later and offered an additional allotment based on that conversation. So I found that invaluable, felt valued, felt heard, and I feel like the students at Harris Road are going to be taken care of as a result of the process.
We're coming together because it's elementary school and there's more of us.
That's how we do it, so.
I think honestly for us, for Pitt School Road, appreciated just everybody being on the same page. A lot of times, you know, we have conversations with, whether it's Ms. Reeves as elementary director or needing something through HR or follow-up with Dr. Withers. So it was very nice to sit down at the table and know that all of us were on the same page and we were aligned. They heard the same concerns, the same affirmation. And just again, I'll echo the transparency from what they sent us initial projections so we could kind of start processing, and then we were able to follow up after that with them and bring our questions, our thoughts, knowing that they were going to be heard and respected and followed up upon. So that really did set us up hopefully for success and like Stephen just said, to help us support our kids. That's what we're all about.
And I'll just speak to Weddington Hills. Allison and I have a large number of students, I have almost 1,000, but we're also in that moderate range. So not only am I getting support with the numbers, but I'm also getting support with the need. And I think that's important to look at both of those coming together to support the students. And I think the team did a great job understanding the need and aligning that with what we can do to support our students.
And I'll just echo that with being probably the largest elementary school at this time as well as being a program choice, it was nice to be able to talk about what we need for the program, but also to talk about just the growth on our side of the county. We are that school that Dr. Withers was talking about that continues to grow, but have this much space left in it. As you know, you've been talking about my school for the past five, 10, 15 years. So we'll just continue to talk about it. But it's a good thing, right? We have great people moving in and it's an awesome school. So appreciate your support and I appreciate the work that they put into it with meeting with all of us.
Where are you from again? Cox Mill Elementary School?
So if I, if I can, real quick, so I wanted to speak to all of you individually as well. To Allison and Chastity, I've been in both your buildings. You're incredible. Those buildings are huge. You are never in your office. I have to go through the building to find you. And when you get there, you're always kind of bragging on the things that are going on and advocating for your, for your students. I appreciate that. It's amazing what you do on a day-in, day-out basis. So I do appreciate your leadership in those buildings. I was able to go to Chris's Education Carnival last week. Again, amazing to how many people in the community were out there, and Chris was digging right in with all of his staff and his teachers there. It was a really neat event to see and participate in. I've been out to James Robinson many times this past winter and Dennis, I don't know if Dennis goes home. He's always at the building. Now his kids are there as well, but his own, his own children go to that school. So I mean, Dennis is heavily vested in that school and his leadership has been very strong. I appreciate that. Stephen, as recently as this weekend, to give you an insight on what administrators deal with, I had to call Stephen very late this weekend. I'm talking very late. It was after 10 o'clock in the evening to deal with an issue. And as I get on the phone, Stephen was already at his school. It just shows the dedication and the leadership. And I've been out to Harris Road a few times as well to watch Stephen work his building. And I've already commented on Kevin, you have some very good, strong leaders that are sitting here in front of you. They are representative of what we see on a day-in, day-out basis here in Cabarrus County, but I appreciate your leadership. I value your input and it means a lot to have you here this evening. So thank you very much, and again, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being with us tonight. That was a great presentation. One more thing, go.
And I apologize. I also wanted to commend Carol Herndon, Dr. Bish, Dr. Williams, Megan Williams, obviously Dr. Withers for her leadership, Ben Alred, Dr. Roth and Sarah Reeves for their participation in this process as well. I would be remiss, I do not want to forget, the best thing that happened to me this past week and the best event that I was at was the 50th anniversary of the Special Olympics in Cabarrus County that took place this week, the return of the Spring Games. The athletes from our elementary, middle and high schools were there as well as the greater community. And events like this just don't happen without the tremendous support from volunteers. But if you ever want to be touched by a child, go to this event. It is an amazing, wonderful thing that we do here in Cabarrus County. Congratulations to all of the people in our county, especially in light of celebrating the 50th celebration this year. So thank you for that and congratulations.
Cabarrus County Schools had a busy week and some really good things going on between the Special Olympics and that career day for our juniors and seniors. It was a really, really great week to celebrate kids. Okay, board members, we will move to 6.03, Board Attorney Comments. I will ask nothing at all. Thank you very much. Then we will proceed to Guest Speaker, 7.01. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the Board Chair. The speakers will be called in the order in which we received the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with the Board Clerk. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the Board Chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. I would like to also remind the viewing audience that the procedure to sign up or to be listed as a guest speaker at our business meeting, which is the meeting that we receive public comment, is to email the Board Clerk at boardclerk@cabarrus.k12.nc.us prior to 12:00 on the day of the business meeting. And then you will have your time to speak, and then you'll just need to list your topic that you will be speaking to. Sarah, anything different from that? Thank you. All right, so we will begin with our speakers, and we have speaker number one, Jonathan Good evening.
Good evening. Back again. Good to see you guys. Since we're still in a state of emergency, I figured we should keep talking about COVID. I know this is old news, but it happened two days after the last meeting. The CDC removes 24% of child COVID-19 deaths, thousands of others. While we're still in a state of emergency, here is Governor Cooper in New Orleans for the Final Four game OMG-ing with Tim Moore during a state of emergency. COVID is running rampant at the White House. Just so that we're clear of, this is not considered close contact. Did you guys see the President Trump was in Selma, North Carolina this past weekend? Lieutenant Mark Robinson was there as well. Many can give a speech. As always, President Trump led the way. He stated, "One of the first things that we will do with our new Republican majorities is end every last COVID mandate. We will pass a bill making it illegal for any employer to interfere with personal health decisions or fire employees not having the vaccine." I'm surprised Roy Cooper wasn't there. The three winners of the 2020 election in NC in one place? Y'all might think it's odd trio, but Cooper won by a large margin, 248,000 votes. On Election Day, he lost by 216,000 votes. Absentee one stop, he lost by 20,000. Absentee by mail, and there it is, 486,000 he won by. Fortunately for North Carolina, Roy Cooper has led us through COVID with shutdowns, vaccine lotteries and masking our children. I know one day we will get through this pandemic, but hopefully not before the election this year, just in case we need to accept mail-in ballots two weeks after the election. It's a story of hope. No lead is too large. I wonder when Roy Cooper will run for president. He beat Donald Trump, who won the state, by 76,000 votes. He beat Joe Biden, the most popular president of all time, by 150,000 votes. Speaking of votes, is there any way I can get a history of how everyone on the board voted for a mask? As of today, 2.6 million cases, 23,000 deaths and 99.117 recovery rate over all age groups. Zero to 17 for North Carolina is 99.997 recovery rate. For Cabarrus County, zero to 17 is 100% recovery rate still. I don't know if you guys saw Philadelphia just instilled a mask mandate again. So we know it's coming, so I'm just curious to see how everyone will do this time around. Hope everyone has a happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number two is Norman McCullough. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm still awake. Thank you so much for enabling me to speak at this body. I'm going to remove my veteran's hat. I was a veteran, Vietnam. I'm going to put on my Warren C. Coleman hat. I've spent about eight, nine years researching Warren C. Coleman. I love Concord. I love Cabarrus County. I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't love where I live. So please indulge me. As many of you know, my name is Norman John McCullough, Senior. I'm a retired college instructor. Most of my students were early college. I'm an author, administrator, historian, former investigator, and trustee for Price Memorial AME Zion Church. Of course, I requesting the five minutes. First and foremost, I have been meeting with members of the Board for the past two months, specifically with Mrs. Kelly Probst and Keisha Sanders and others. The Board is in the process of ordering my book, WarrenClayColeman.com. I'll say that again, WarrenClayColeman.com for schools and students. If one Googles his name, his story as a Concord native will emerge. In short, Mr. Coleman, not me, was the richest African American in America here in Concord as of 1900. Unlike Mr. Booker T. Washington and Mr. Frederick Douglass, he, Coleman, was an entrepreneur of the highest order in real estate and many of his white relatives were attorneys. Many of them. If you buy my book for the students in the eighth, ninth, 11th, 10th, 12th grade, that is only the first step. Kelly has already purchased seven books. Very good. The next step is to design an appropriate curriculum to teach the students in the most effective manner. Training is appropriate. However, according to Kelly and Leon, 20 teachers would be eligible to take the training, but none of them are black. None of them. It's like telling a person to paint a house and none of the people are painters. Okay? Please don't say you can't find competent black teachers. How is this possible in 2022 in Southern America? How is it possible that one black female who could assist us in this regard is leaving? Dr. Hill, we are going to miss you. This community is going to miss you. Indulge me, please. Black people have been here for hundreds of years. Please do everything you can to keep Mrs. Keisha Sanders. The current census of Cabarrus indicates that the non-white population is 40 to 50% non-white and increasingly becoming non-white in a similar manner as the school system itself. Given my former life as a civil rights investigator, director of training for the New York City system, one could say that the school system, I'm not saying is, could be in violation of Title VI and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. I have been here before. I'm continually knocking on the door. People in this community are listening. They know me, okay? Please, all of this could be very costly for the district. Given all of above, your next assistant superintendent should be one that focuses on diversity and other related issues, similar to what the city of Concord has done by hiring Ms. Emma Sellers. They're going to protect themselves. The city of Concord has decided to protect themselves. As such, I'm requesting that you order my books and offer me a position as a consultant training to protect the system and save money for the district. You could say that's self-serving. Maybe it is. I'm just saying, hey, if you love this school system as much as I do, you better hire somebody.
Mr. McCullough?
I am a professional of the highest order, learning about Warren C. Coleman, Thomas Coleman, Roxanna Coleman, Rufus Barringer, Paul Brandon Barringer, J.W. Hood, Joseph C. Price, and Alan T. Small, and many others is critical. Critical. Some people call me Mr. Tibbs and some people call me Dr. McCullough. I am praying that Cabarrus County will do the right thing.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move to Reports, 8.01, Committee Reports. Board members, does anyone have anything from your positions? Committee, Ms. Sandage? Absolutely.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Schools and Community Engagement Committee. So this will, just to give you a little bit of overview, this will be a board committee and it will be open to the public and it will be subject to the Public Meetings laws. Myself will chair and Holly will also be a part of this board committee. This committee will examine a diverse array of issues impacting students in CCS. We will meet quarterly starting May 26 of 2022. Our first meeting will be held at Concord Middle School and it will be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We are looking for applications from various liaisons in the student population, parent and or guardian population, administrators, faculty, or staff, and then community members. Those applications will be on the Board page and it will have a separate tab. We have not identified the name of that tab just yet, but it will be on the Board page. And those applications should be available on the 15th of this month and will be due back to, I'm thinking Kelly, it will be due back to Dr. Kelly Probst by 5/6/2022. And the name of the first meeting will be, let me make sure I get that right for you guys, past and current state of student behaviors and wellness. So we'll look at student discipline and how that has occurred throughout the district and hopefully provide some solutions as we go forward. We really want this to be all-inclusive and be a part of our community discussions and also help us to identify issues and help to work to fix them together. That is, well, I have two more things. So Wes Cabarrus had a prom project this weekend. It was absolutely amazing. I think that it's really, really good. I remember several years ago, there was a young lady who had prom dresses in her attic. She became sick and Wes Cabarrus, Mrs. Carter picked that up. So young ladies, if you need a prom dress, please get in contact with Ms. Carter at the front desk at Wes Cabarrus. And then also, I went to a lovely performance at Central Cabarrus High School. They did a theater program for Annie and it was amazing. I thought that they were professional theater staff. They were students. Our students are freaking amazing and I just want to make sure you guys know that. So thank you for allowing our students to be great. So I want to thank our teachers and our staff just for pouring into our students. That's all I have.
Great job. Anyone else? Hearing none, we will ask our Teacher of the Year Ashton Berry to the podium for our Cabarrus County School Spotlight on Educators.
Good evening, Madam Chair and esteemed members of the Board. Before I begin our spotlight, on a more personal note, if you'll bear with me, I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to the members of the Board, CCS staff, and CCS families for the absolute outpouring of love and support that was sent my way in Raleigh last week for the NCTOY process. The work of uplifting and amplifying the voices of students and teachers in the Southwest region begins officially in July and I couldn't be more excited for this incredible, excuse me, opportunity. I wanted to specifically thank Dr. Kapicki, my principal, Dr. Sandy Ward, and Ms. Leanne Haveli, my curriculum writing mentor, for making the drive to support me that day. I'm so looking forward to the year ahead as I get to work alongside our amazing Boroughs Welcome Fund Regional Teacher of the Year with Ms. Leah Carper as our captain of our ship to serve the 1.5 million public school teachers, students of North Carolina through our partnerships with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, the State Board of Education, and state leaders regarding important issues of education and equity. I was just overwhelmed by the number of messages and calls and emails that I got that day and I think it just speaks so well of how special CCS is. And with that being said, let's move on to tonight's spotlight. Thank you so much for another opportunity to highlight the amazing things happening in schools across Cabarrus County. The teachers, administrators, and coordinators that you will hear about tonight, like so many across our district, continue to go above and beyond as they strive for and achieve excellence each and every day through their pedagogy and praxis. Tonight, I want to present you with a spotlight on our new partnership with Junior Achievement. You will hear about several of our pilot schools and the collaborating educators who are leading the way. We have the privilege of having Ms. Leanne Haveli, Cabarrus County Schools PK through 12 Curriculum and Instruction Coordinator, as a guest speaker tonight. Ms. Haveli has coordinated the Junior Achievement work and she is here tonight to tell us about the JA in a Day High School Heroes Program, the BizTown and Finance Park immersion experiences, and the fantastic CCS educators who have collaborated in order to offer these enriching real-world learning experiences for our students. And with that, I'll hand it over.
Thank you for having me here tonight to share this and thank you Ashton for that introduction. These experiences took place at Irvin Elementary School, Concord High School, and Concord Middle School and the feedback has been remarkably positive, so I'm very excited to share with you. We combined the JA in a Day in the High School History, sorry, High School Heroes curriculum together for our students at Irvin Elementary. 81 Concord High School students learned K5 curriculum that was provided by JA and then spent the entire day at Irvin Elementary School delivering this curriculum to the students. This curriculum focuses on problem solving, community, government, economics, and it's all focused around these economic principles and values like spending, saving and earning, paying taxes, and participation in the community and in the government. Kids learned about being entrepreneurs. They learned what it means to start a business and run a business, to make a paycheck and earn a wage. Each grade level was assigned roughly two to three CHS students that worked with them and the following, oh, am I on the wrong slide? Yes, there we go, sorry. The following teachers are the ones who volunteered their classrooms for us as their lab rooms. And so we couldn't have done this without them and we want to say thank you. Each one of the CHS students actually immersed themselves in the K5 experience and so they spent the whole day with their classroom. They even went to recess with them if they had recessed that day. They ate lunch with them in the cafeteria and they went to their encore classes and participated in art or chorus, whatever they were doing that day. This also would not have been possible without the work of these leaders at both Irvin and Concord High School, without Dr. Hill who set up the meeting initially with Kim Baker at JA, and without Kathleen Green who did all the financing and the budgeting for us to request the buses and the other things that we needed. And like I said, the feedback was extremely positive, so we look forward to trying this again with more schools next year. We also piloted a 6'8" curriculum at Concord Middle School. They, sorry, they participate in classroom lessons in the sixth and eighth grade that are taught by their social studies teachers and they focus on careers, communities, spending and saving, investing, and much more. This experience culminates with a one-day-long visit to either BizTown in the sixth grade or Finance Park in the eighth grade. These are hands-on financial laboratories that provide reality-based simulations where students actually run businesses, receive paychecks, pay taxes, apply for loans, and can even work in the government. The goals of these programs are to develop awareness around economic responsibilities and principles, but also to immerse the students in the real world as we experience it financially as adults. This work again would not have been possible without these teachers at Concord Middle School in sixth and eighth grade and the leadership at Concord Middle School, as well as Dr. Hill who again put us in contact with JA and Kathleen Green who got us the buses and the funding. Again, the feedback was extremely positive. We look forward to continuing this partnership and I want to say thank you again to Dr. Hill, Kathleen Green, Concord High School, Irvin Elementary School, Concord Middle School, our partners at JA, and of course to all of you for allowing me to share this with you tonight. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Haveli. So just to reiterate, I'd like to thank and congratulate the fantastic CCS educators involved in the Junior Achievement collaboration, as well as Ms. Leanne Haveli for their unwavering dedication to their students and public education. Our school district is better because each and every one of them are in it and we are very grateful for them. They are all incredible and irreplaceable assets to Cabarrus County Schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. Comments or questions, anyone? Ms. Carpenter?
You know, I had to put my two cents worth in. I had the wonderful opportunity to tour BizTown and the Financial Park at around Christmas time. It was a wonderful, wonderful experience and it is going to be a wonderful opportunity for our students and they were just great. And the curriculum that JA has for the students, especially the financial piece, I am just so, so, so excited for our students to be able to do that and they will get so much out of it. And I can't wait for our students to be able to do, to tour both of those facilities. So I am all in for it. And again, they are just wonderful and again, our students will get so much out of that and again, they just do a wonderful, wonderful job. I was, when we first heard about us doing a partnership with JA, I said, I can't believe it's still around. It was in, it was in school when I was in school and I'm, I'm, I've got a little age on me, but it was a wonderful program back then and I really do.
You want to remind the viewing audience what JA is? I think we've said it so many times.
Junior Achievement, I'm sorry, Junior Achievement, but it was, it was in school when I was in school. And that, again, has been a few years ago. But again, I'm glad we have the opportunity for our students and again, wonderful, wonderful program.
Thank you. Ms. Sandage?
So I was, I was in the meeting earlier today with the state superintendent and our kids are really inquisitive about politics and government and what's happening and how you get there and all that stuff. So when you talked about politics here, I just want to know, what does that look like? Just a summary of what they learn in that?
Sorry, it's not as robust as a political science curriculum because you have to remember it is focused primarily on economics and personal finance. But at BizTown and Finance Park, there are mayors, there are council people. They do talk about in the different curriculums in JA in a Day in the K5, they talk about the different types of local government, the responsibilities citizens have for voting, but it goes back again to that financial responsibility, so taxation. And then what do we use taxation for? And so a lot of local taxes, right, go to building schools and building that. So there's a political element to it, but it doesn't necessarily delve into, say, the current geopolitical climate and current events around politics.
Yeah, no, that's more than enough. Just for them to get that introduction to politics, I think that's very important. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Mr. Walter?
Yes, I think it's a great opportunity for our students and I appreciate all the work that goes into putting it together. What does it take to scale this up now to other schools or what is the plan for next year or what resources do you need to continue to give more students the opportunity?
So as you know, this was a pilot year and I've been working with Dr. Hill and we've been working with JA to continue those discussions. We're getting ready to have a meeting with JA now that we have all the feedback and they have all their feedback so that we can make sure that as far as I know, what I've seen from my teachers and the students, it was very positive. But before we say, yes, we're going full speed ahead with this, we do just want to make sure that we're all on the same page and that the feedback is where it is. And then the plan is to hopefully roll this out. There's an EPF program that we'd like to use for high school and then rolling out more JA in a Day and High School Heroes, using those feeder schools and those relationships and then also getting it into the sixth and eighth grade curriculum for all of our middle schools. It will require a little bit of funding, but that's what we're working on. But it's in, it's in its infancy right now because it just wrapped up and so we're still in the process of reflecting and feedback and talking to JA about next steps.
It sounds like a wonderful program. I would like to see other kids take advantage of it.
It really checks all the boxes.
Yeah, it really checks all the boxes that we want for a community partnership, but also for financial literacy for our students.
I'll go ahead since you're, okay. No, I thank you, and just like the rest of them said, we've got to figure out a way that every kid in this county can be involved. I think we also, we may need a program at a high school, and I think it's probably one of the most important things we can do for them. Thank you.
So, we do have the EPF course, and I have a teacher at the early colleges right now who's piloting their financial literacy course.
Can you explain what EPF is?
Sorry, Economic and Personal Finance. Sorry, I live in a world of acronyms.
We all do too, but...
Economic and Personal Finance, which is the new, the legislation split civics and economics and pulled the economics out of civics. So, now civics is civic literacy, and we have a brand-new Economic and Personal Finance course that all students who are sophomores this year must take in order to graduate. And so, it's being taught at the early colleges. It will be in all of our high schools next year, and one of our early colleges, the Early College of Technology, is piloting one of JA's programs to help teach EPF, or Economics and Personal Finance. So, we actually do have a high school program that we're piloting as well, but since she's still teaching, we don't have any of the data yet to come back and provide that yet.
I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna echo what Tim said. I think it's really important that students, they are ready for the world, because, I mean, this stuff is what happens every day when they leave a school system, you know? And this seemingly prepares them for all of the things that they would encompass, and then it helps them to understand, "How do I, how do I be a part of my community?" And I just, I mean, I would echo what Tim said. How do we figure out how to get this, and, I mean, opportunity for all students? I don't think you answered that question, though.
I think that's going to be a conversation that Dr. Hill and Dr. Kupicki and all those powers that they need to have, we've been talking about this for years. And to Ms. Sandage's point today, that was a huge point of conversation with the students, and this was just perfect timing, so we appreciate that. But we really do think that's a conversation that needs to be had for future budgets.
Well, I'm excited about it, and they enjoyed it, so let me know what I can do to make that happen with you guys.
Great. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. Anything else, board members? Okay, next, we will have 9.02, the update on school bus pilot programs, and we will have Mr. Art Whitaker, Director of Transportation, to the podium. Good evening.
That's a hard act to follow right there, so. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Madam Chair, Dr. Kupicki. Thank you for having me this, here this evening to present with you some pilot programs that we are partnering with the Department of Public Education. We're just looking at trying to make sure that we're going to implement some things within our school bus industry that we want to make sure that, we want the board to know that they're out there, and we're just trying to keep you informed and give you a presentation tonight on that. Our mission statement is safe, reliable, on-time transportation of nearly the 34,000 students that we have in our district. So, if you notice that I put the word "safe" up there, okay, that's first. Anytime we get that opportunity to increase that capability, we will, we will take that opportunity. And tonight, I bring you three test programs, excuse me, that we'll be advancing with the Department of Public Instruction. One caveat to what you're getting ready to see, the piece of, the school bus is a piece of North Carolina state property. It belongs to the state of North Carolina. Anytime we do anything to the school bus, we have to have the Department of Public Instruction's blessing to do that. So, what you're going to see tonight, we've had their blessing, and they've partnered with us to actually go through them. So, the first up, I would like to first point out that your traditional school bus and stop-arm decals are non-illuminated and made of reflective material. I'm sure we've all gone down the road in low-light conditions, and we've actually seen our headlights actually reflect on the school bus or on the stop sign. So, the first project that I'd like to go over with you is the illuminated school bus sign. This is a product from First Light Safety Products, and the purpose of this pilot is to, this product is to be tested and evaluated for its high visibility and vehicle identification for approaching school buses. We get a lot of times that a lot of people tell us, "We didn't know that that was a school bus coming." So, this would be really hard to miss the light it, the illuminated school bus in the back and the illuminated school bus in the front. We also will be piloting the illuminated stop sign onboard of our school buses. The purpose of this pilot is to evaluate the effectiveness of the lighted stop sign for increased visibility. This should reduce our stop-arm violations, which occur daily. And you can see right there that now that sign will be lighted as well. And last, CCS Transportation Department has also been selected to go a step further and test out a new product, and that product is designed to illuminate the walk path for left-handed passenger stops. Any passenger stops that we'll be making that the student actually has to cross the street, we have a high-intensity light that will be actually lighting the pathway for them to go, and they can actually see where they're walking. That is powered by a high-powered LED light mounted to the bumper. In addition, there's two red LED flashing lights on the grille to enhance the visibility of the stopped school bus. Our goals, we will be collecting the feedback from our drivers. We will provide DPI with that data. We hope that once that data is vetted with DPI and they agreed with us, that we'll implement that in our fleet, and that will improve our overall student safety. So, do you have any questions?
Okay, board members, I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
Don't have any questions, but I really liked all of those ideas, anything we can do to make sure our kids are safe while they're riding buses.
Absolutely. Ms. Carpenter?
You know, Ms. Carpenter always has questions. No, I had seen another one. These are all fantastic. Again, the safety of our children always taught with me. Another one that I had seen, and I don't know, the extended stop arm, the great big long one that goes way out there, is there a pilot program for that one, or can you tell me anything about that one? I read something about that.
I can tell you that that was piloted in another county. It has mixed results. I mean, there is a, might be more than the information that's what you need, but there is a shear pin in that, in that stop arm because it goes way out into the other lane. And when actually a vehicle or whatever came in contact, it would break the pin, and it would stop the route. So, we would actually have to stop the route from proceeding if that, if that stop arm was even touched. So, we were, we were met with some kind of mixed reviews on that because it actually does stop the route. We have to send mechanics out there to repair that, things like that.
Okay, well, I knew you would know about it, but this is great, and again, we'd like to pilot whatever, but you've already answered my question. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ms. Blackwell?
So, I love this, too. This is fantastic. So, when will these be put onto the school buses?
So, our timeframe is to go ahead and run these for the rest of the year, to evaluate the data over the summer, and then to see if DPI will go ahead and sign off and then start implementing them for next year, August next year.
Yep, that's what I was going to ask you. When we give them the information, and then when would they sign off on it?
It should be over the summertime, because I think we're, they're gathering, we should have the data finished up by this year. We're going to have to have it dated, but it's, it's going to be finished up this year. We take that, we crunch that data, we send it back to DPI, and we wait on their, their implementation schedule.
Wonderful. I love it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Fur?
No questions.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, a couple, couple of questions. So, essentially, how many buses are you testing?
So, we have one school bus, one stop arm, and eight Guardian Angel systems. That's, that's what DPI authorized us to make, to make pilots on.
So, three separate, separate, three separate tests?
Yeah, three separate tests.
Not on one bus? All those things not on one?
No, no, there's one on the yellow, there's one on the red, and there's eight separate buses within our fleet with the Guardian system.
But you're optimistic this will be approved?
I'm very optimistic. We were getting positive feedback from the, from the individuals driving down the road that said, "Yeah, I saw that, I saw that school bus coming for miles off," so it's been very helpful to us.
So, when the test is done, they're going to leave it on the bus, or they take it off the bus?
Well, we're going to go ahead and leave it on the bus if they, if they allow us to implement it.
So, you'll know right then by the time it's done?
We'll know right then.
If it's approved. So, then that leads to the question, is how much does it cost to retrofit a bus?
So, so the stop sign is about $2,000 installed, the yellow school bus sign is about $2,000 installed, and the lighted pathway is about $900 installed.
And that's funded by DPI directly, or is that part of the school buses?
We can, we can, we can choose that as a local option, and if it's implemented on the specifications of a school bus, then it'll be standard equipment. It'll come as standard equipment, but it has to go through that implementation pilot, and DPI will have to sign off on it.
So, buses coming forward will have the new stuff, but the current buses will not, or will have to?
Correct, or we will retrofit the ones that we have.
At our cost or at DPI's cost?
It will see if we can get a special allotment from DPI to do that.
Okay. And the other question, I think, did you not have a pilot program on the stop-arm cameras and stuff? Did we do that before?
Yes, sir, that's still ongoing.
How did that turn out?
That's still going on, and that is very successful. We're having, we moved from vendors. We went from one vendor to another vendor, and this other vendor, we were absolutely astounded by some of the footage that we got. Some of the, some of the footage is absolutely amazing. So, we work in conjunction with our local law enforcement with that, because once we have a stop-arm violation, we fill the paperwork out, we crop the tape, and we give that to local law enforcement for, for their action.
I'd like to see a report sometime in the future about that program.
I sure will.
And the last question had to do with the GPSs on buses, didn't we? We have a few buses that had GPS on them, how, where is that program?
Yes, sir. All of our buses have GPS capability on them now.
Every one of them?
Every one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sandage?
So, it checked all the boxes for me, safety, no cost, and you're going to provide us with data to see how it's going, so that's great. I also just want to say kudos to the bus driver spotlight you've been doing. That, like, is really great. It's inexpensive, and it just makes people feel really, really good inside to see themselves on our pages, so thank you for doing that.
And that all goes to our HR specialist, April Kobel. She came up with the idea, and I told her I thought it was wonderful, and she implemented, so kudos to Mrs. Kobel.
Mr. Whitaker, I just want to say thank you for the report this evening. I continue to be impressed by your due diligence and your homework. I appreciate you coming out this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Okay, board members, we will move to items under number 10.01, which is our consent agenda. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Fur. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We will move to our action agenda under 11.01, and we will begin with our mandate still in place through the end of the school year. May I have a motion that the masking guidelines continue to remain mask optional?
I make the motion that we continue to remain mask optional.
Can I second? Oh, no, go ahead.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will move to 11.02, the approval of Policy 4700 student records. May I have a motion that Policy 4700 student records be approved on second read as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
We have a 6-1 with Ms. Carpenter as a no. May I have a, we'll move to 11.03, approval of Policy 4720 surveys of students. May I have a motion that Policy 4720 surveys of students be approved on second read as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I have a 6-1 with Ms. Carpenter as a no. Thank you. We will move to 11.04, the Northwest Cabarrus High School Architectural Recommendations, and we will have Mr. Brian Cohn to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kupicki, members of the board. Last week, we had the privilege of hearing from two incredibly talented architectural firms on their vision for what they saw as the new Northwest Cabarrus High School project. Throughout the past week, I did not receive any questions from any of you regarding those presentations, so I will put that back in your hands now.
So, I'll begin the discussion on the floor unless I have a motion.
I, Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we accept Morris Berg as the architect on this.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor to accept Morris Berg as the architect by Ms. Carpenter, a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, and I would like to see...
Do we have a discussion, or?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Can I give your reasoning, or is I?
Okay, yes. Well, I like their proposal, and they have done other schools for us. One of the things I did like, they had kept the lake, I mean, the lake there, and one of the things I would like to stress, you know, they have, you know, the new school will have an architect, I mean, will have agricultural type, you know, they, Northwest does have that, and I'm hoping that the firm will take that into consideration and work around that lake with agricultural-type facility. And I know that, Rob, you had mentioned that you would like to see that really enhanced, and so, they had taken, that was one thing different about their proposal. And two, we, I would like to see our local, they are local, now, you correct me if I'm wrong, they are local, and we have, I would like to see them use locally, use some of our local people, and we have used Yates before, and they've done a couple. How many, how many of the schools have they done? You can tell me that locally.
Well, in recent years, they're on the third school, so.
And so, let's give another, another one of our local firms a chance, and that's one of the reasons that I wanted to do that. And they, and Morris Berg have done schools, but it's been quite a while, so I'm trying to give another local company an opportunity, and that was one of the two choices that our construction committee had made. So, that's one of my reasons. Now, other board members can say something else, but that was the choice of our construction committee.
And so, my reason, if you wanted to hear that too, Rob, was simply because of the ability to use the agricultural and the pond. I was sold on that feature, and they talked about it, and preserving that was important to a lot of the people on this board, so that was my reason for second in it.
Anyone else want to speak?
Ask a question, I guess. I know I was here last week, but didn't both firms going to keep the pond? Or were going to try to keep the pond in their presentations? Am I wrong?
I don't recall if Yates, Kreitzberg, Hughes had presented as maintaining or keeping the pond as a part of their overall presentation.
How about the landscaping architect?
Yeah, she, she was on both teams and spoke to the possibility of using the pond as a part of a feature for the site itself.
Yeah, she was the one that really pushed the pond. Am I correct?
She was, yes, that is correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, she, she got the opportunity to speak a lot during that presentation, and I've liked her from the first time I heard her spoke. I know she was going to work with both firms, but she really got a chance to tell us what she was going to do and why she was going to do that, and that speaks volumes to me. I don't know about everybody else, but that's my reasoning.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment, or I'm going to put, I'm going to call for the question? Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter, I have a second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Ms. Adcock, where were you?
I was on that, yes.
Okay, four, okay, so.
Raise our hands if we can see.
Absolutely. So, again, all those in favor. Okay, so, and opposed. Okay. Motion passes for three, so we will award our contract for the Northwest Cabarrus High School Architectural Recommendation to be presented to Morris Berg.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's move to 11.05, which is the 2022-2023 Proposed Budget Request to Cabarrus, to the Cabarrus County Commissioners, and we will have Mrs. Carol Hurd into the podium.
Good evening, board. Back again for our third conversation regarding our local budget request to the county for As a reminder, this is the meeting that we are hopeful that you all will be able to adopt. This budget request for our county commissioners, we will be going in front of the county commissioners on Thursday of this week at 4:00. We're first on the docket to present our request, and had a great conversation with our local commissioners. We're first on the docket to present our request, and had a great conversation with the team over at the county last week in preparation for this week's conversation, and looking forward to the opportunity to share this information with the commissioners this week. There was one follow-up conversation question from last week's presentation that I just wanted to share before we go over one last time the request in front of us. This was a question to better understand why the operating expense appropriation that was summarized last week did not in, um, agree to the local initial budget resolution, and those numbers are not intended to agree. The operating expense appropriation is a subset of the total local appropriation from a revenue perspective from our county. You'll see highlighted in yellow are the major differences. One big one that we talked about last week was the funding that comes to us as a pass-through to our charter schools. Um, so that's not funding that we keep. We pass it through to charter schools that serve students that are domiciled in our Cabarrus County School District. Uh, also, we talked about fines and forfeitures last week. Um, those are collections by not only our county, but the city government as well, and we get a, a fair share of those passed along to us. Again, not part of operating expense, but a funding source that comes to our county, um, comes to our district from our county. Uh, also, in, in that, um, number, the total eighty-some thousand, million dollars that was in the initial local budget resolution, we, um, provide all of the maintenance, um, facility maintenance work for Kannapolis City Schools, and so the county funds us in order to support Kannapolis City Schools. So, um, does not benefit our district, but we provide that work on their behalf, and the funding comes straight to us from the county. And then we had talked about the fact that our initial budget resolution included a fund balance appropriation, just as it does almost every year. Um, and that is never settled until we get till the end of the year and take a hard look at our revenues, um, um, that come in from our local government and our expenditures, and we'll start that work, um, really deeply analyzing all of that in the month of May as we get close to our June 30th fiscal year-end. So, this is just a full reconciliation between those two numbers. I hope that that's helpful, um, and again, it's all revenue that comes to our school district, but not necessarily a part of the operating expense appropriation, but all revenues that do come to us. So, with that said, we have had some conversations internally about the possibility to put in front of the board two additional requests that we would like to add as part of our operation expense expansion ask to the county. The first is to increase our stipends for our VEX robotics coaches, and we spent a lot of time, uh, working with, um, the VEX robotics team to, um, summarize what we thought would be a fair and equitable increase, and what we were able to land on is an opportunity to have a, an increased stipend for not only our head coaches, but also our assistant coaches at each school. Um, and I feel, um, comfortable, and, and I, I feel like I represent Dr. Bish as well in saying that. I worked closely with Crystal and David to summarize the work that had been done to date behind those stipends, and to make sure that we fully loaded the cost of those increased stipends with the district's share of FICA and retirement cost, and, uh, the total related ask will be $205,000. We also are putting in front of the board an opportunity to do, um, some dynamic leadership training for our principals, um, and you saw how talented the group that was here tonight, and, uh, really pouring into them an opportunity to grow and enhance their leadership schools. I, I like to refer to our principals as CEOs of their buildings, because they do a little bit of everything. And so, uh, this work, um, which, uh, will be around $100,000, will be partnering with, um, a national institute for school leadership to, um, provide some specific professional development to our principals. And so, we would like to, um, the board to consider increasing our operating expense expansion budget to consider these two items. And this is the summary request and recommendation that we will put in front of the county with your blessing and adoption tonight. On Thursday, it does include the $305,000 that I just talked about on the previous page, the VEX, uh, stipend increase, and also the professional development for our principals has been added. And so, you might remember that, that percentage increase ask when we were together last week was about 11.47%. Um, it's going up slightly because of those two additional items to 11.63%. No change with regard to what we talked about last week as it relates to our re- request to the county for capital outlay support. Um, that remains the same. And with that, um, we are hopeful that the board is prepared to adopt this budget. Um, we will then take it to the county and present it in a lot more detail than what I summarized here. This was an evolution of our conversations over the, the past three Mondays, uh, and put it in front of our commissioners and have a chance to tell our story. And then we will wait to hear what the state does in May around approving the second year of the biennial budget. And once we have that information and we get the final confirmation of our appropriation from the county, we'll start to work on the creation of the detailed budgets underneath all of our funds in preparation for bringing in front of the board the initial budget resolution for approval in the August, September timeframe. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I will start the discussion with Ms. Sandage.
I had a question, and I just lost it literally as you were talking. No, I know what it is. So, for the VEX robotics, can you help us understand when that salary was established? Like, they came in here and they told us that this has been the same salary for this length of time. To help to justify the change, I hope I'm making sense.
Like, when did they, when was the $500 approved?
Right.
Um, Crystal, are you aware of that? It's been years.
So, and we were talking about-
Seventeen, 2017?
Okay, and we were talking about there was really no identified, like, this is not going on somewhere else for us to be able to say, well, they're doing this over here, and that should justify the salary. Am I, am I thinking about that correctly?
Well, what we, what we, um, we did step back and take a look at stipends that are paid for other extracurricular activities and sports, because that, we felt like, was the compelling argument that came in last week's meeting. And so, they're all a bit different, because the hours involved are a bit different. What we haven't had a chance to do is the comprehensive, um, compensation strategy that we want to do, that we still need to do, that I think will inform all of our stipends in the future. But we did step back and look at this, at least from a, an, an equity perspective with regard to the stipends that follow the other extracurricular activities.
I think you just answered my next question in talking about just kind of the study of, um, stipends going forward. So, that will happen. I know Dr. Bish is not here, but, um, I don't know if there's some identified timeframe on that, um, but if you-
Yes, ma'am, it's definitely gonna happen, and, um, our hope is to, um, start and finish that work over the course of the summer. Um, it's a pretty extensive project, and so I don't wanna put, um, a stake in the ground, because, uh, Dr. Bish and I really wanted to get the allotment work, um, off and running and, and behind us, and also this budget process as well, but that is a key to do for us to lead in the summer.
As always, thank you. You've answered my questions.
Mr. Walter?
Two questions on the presentation. Uh, one, you mentioned the charter school. Is it our job to determine what the projection for the charter schools are, or how, how do they do that?
It is, um, so what we do, it's, it's, it's challenging, although it's been helpful for us that we haven't had a proliferation of new charter schools in our county in recent years. Now, that will change as we look forward to 2023, 2024, because there are two that are, um, scheduled to open, although we've heard there might be some delays because of construction challenges. So, what we have done historically, and what we did again for the projection for the upcoming school year, was to look at the growth of charter school ADM, average daily membership, over the past, I think, seven years, and, um, used that average to project growth in their ADM for the upcoming school year.
I didn't see that in any of the presentation.
Uh, I can, I don't have that number in front of me.
The county's expecting it, though, is that correct? That's part of what you have to-
We had to, we had to send that to them in some of their pre-request weeks ago.
Yeah, I, I had-
Yeah, I, I did not have it-
I'd seen what that number is, but as you said, it's a pass-through anyway, so it's a-
Yes, sir, absolutely.
It's gonna affect what we fund and what we can't fund. Um, and the second question is, as you said, we're recommending adding these two items to, to our operating expense expansion requests. Do those go to the end? Do they go in, in front? Are they traged? Do we know? I mean, where would they go, where would they fall?
Well, I think, um, I haven't been through that part of the process yet, um, but I, I believe the intention would be that we would, um, obviously acknowledge and in honor the ranking that has been established. Once we see what our appropriation yields, then I would imagine we'll go back and, and reassess all of those lined up together. Would be what I would expect would happen.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, that makes sense to me, but, uh, but as far as, those are my questions. My comment has to do, I think, still think this is an unrealistic ask. I think it's unfair that we put that on an expansion budget, 'cause it, it really adds an expectation that, hey, we're gonna fund this thing, when really that funding decision is not up to us, that funding decision is gonna be up to the county.
Correct.
And I don't think that's fair. So, we'll go back, I guess, to the, the last couple of slides where the actual budget request is. Is that right, the last two pages, or?
This is operating expense, and then this is capital.
Uh, page before that, I guess, is the fir- is, is continuous. We have two buckets that we're requesting, we're requesting an operational expanse, expense, and we're asking for capital. So, if I add this up and look that up, that says, uh, uh, they currently, last year, they gave us seventy, what, almost 71 million? And we're asking for, what, almost nine million more?
Eight point three, yes, sir.
So, the ask now is gonna be seven, 79 million dollars, 340,000, 243 is what I had that up to be. What you said here is 11.63%.
Yes, sir.
I see no way that the county can fund that, number one. Number two, if you look on their budget webs, but, their site, and you bring up their budget, and you look at their, um, I looked through their budget, somewhere on page 69 there, they have a nice chart that actually projects what the, uh, funding for the schools, Cabarrus County Schools' operation budget can be, what they're planning on, and that's a 3% number. It goes up to, you know, 2000, fiscal year 24, it's 4.8%, 25, it's 6.74%, and 26 is 5.95%. But currently, what they're planning, at least from this, is somewhere around a 3%. A 3% and an 11%, that's a huge difference, uh, to me. I don't see how that can be reconciled, and I say if we're, we're, if we're advocating and saying, hey, county, you need to fund this, 'cause we're gonna vote for it and prove it, uh, that's an unrealistic ask, and this is essentially advocating for a tax increase, which I'm certainly not in favor of, uh, 'cause there's no other way that they, they pay for it. And then when we go back to the, the budget, the, to the capital, the next slide, um, we have, uh, 351 million dollars, and last year, they gave us 43. So, the difference between 342 and 43 is huge. That's not realistic, and I can't advocate that as a budget. If we call it a budget, it's a, it's a one-year estimate of whatever the income and expenses are gonna be. Not expecting the county to come up with 351 million dollars in capital money for next year. That's just, to me, I can't support that when it's that unrealistic. Those are my comments.
Well, I think we were clear about that, though, when we put this together, that this was something we wanted to keep in front of them so that they understood what the needs of the district are long-term. Um, this is not new. This is something that's been going on for many years prior to anybody being here, and I think it is important for the county to understand as the, as the county continues to plan out what the needs of the district are. These are real needs. I think everyone has understood that, that, uh, we're not gonna get 342 million dollars, but it would also be irresponsible of us not to at least explain to the county what the needs are. So, that is the intent of this. In terms of percentage increase, I'm not advocating for a tax increase either, but I don't make that decision. What I need to do is advocate for kids and make sure our kids have everything that they need. And these are real requests, and then the county will come down and, and let's be honest with each other. I don't think you're ever gonna get what you asked for, but the reality of it is, we are going to ask and continue to advocate for kids. Now, I respect immensely that the points you make, and I think they're valid, good points. But our job, and my job as your superintendent, and I will continue to do it, is to advocate for our system, to make sure that we're getting everything we can for kids, and continue to work hand-in-hand collaboratively with the county, as we have, and, and we will do that. But it would be absolutely irresponsible for me not to sit here as your superintendent, go to the county next week and say, these are the real needs we have, so that they know. And then it continues the conversation, and we end up making really good decisions on our FMD capital outlay, the deferred maintenance, and then taking a look at those long-term projects. We also have a capital plan that we went over with the board on three or four different occasions, sat down with the county, went over that 10-year plan. Now, we know that 10-year plan can change. So, one could argue that that 10-year plan, as you have eloquently stated, is probably not as accurate as, as it's going to be 10 years down the road. We know next year is probably realistic, but everything changes. So, again, my point here is that we are going to continue to advocate with all due respect. I respect where you're coming from, I understand the points you made, they're valid, but we are going to go and advocate for children every step of the way, and I know you believe that too, uh, but it would be your responsibility for me not to put out some of those numbers to them, so, so that, so that, so I just wanna be clear about that, just-
We're, we're on the same page as advocating for kids. We don't, we're calling it a budget, a budget is a one-
I'm not calling, I'm not calling it a budget. You keep calling, it's a, it's, I hear, I know, it says budget request recommendations, okay? It says budget request recommendations. I won't know what the budget is till the county come back, county comes back and says, here's the amount of money you're getting. And that, and that deadline is May 15th, and then we have the local budget, then we have the state budget, and the federal budget. We put that all together, we come back, and you know that process.
Yeah, I don't wanna get an argument over this stuff.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna get, we keep getting hammered up in these semantics, though, and I wanna be real clear about this. It's a, it, it's, it's appropriate to call it a budget, because we are developing a budget, and we're putting these requests in front of the county. And in doing so, we're following, this is the process that we follow.
I represent the taxpayers and the community.
I, I understand that.
I have to look at that stuff, that is important to me. And this is a budget, if we call it a budget, it's one thing. If we wanna put a list of needs, I'm happy to put together a resolution that says, hey, county, this is our needs, we need a plan to fund these things, but it's not a budget.
But, but again, Ms. Director Walters, I'm not, I'm never, I've never, we, we're splitting hairs here. These are the requests that we're putting in front of the county to develop our budget long-term. You know that, I know that. And our, and our, everyone in this finance department has worked amazing, has, has worked immensely hard to put this together for us, and we keep nitpicking a word, and, and you know what? I gotta be honest, like, it's, it's insulting to us, and it's gotta stop, 'cause this is, this is what we do, this is what you've done, and we're following the policy to the letter, and we're going to go out there Thursday, we're gonna make these requests, and we're gonna, and we're gonna see where it lands. And then we're gonna come back and talk to you, talk to you and all the other board members respectfully about what that budget looks like.
All right, again-
But we're, but we're splitting hairs here, and this is not productive. It's not productive.
I'm giving you my opinion, which I'm supposed to do.
And I'm getting, and I respect that, and I'm giving you mine, but, but I-
But a budget is a one-year projection.
I understand what a budget is. I understand what a budget is.
Mr. Walter, I'm gonna call time on the discussion, okay?
I totally understand what a budget is, but you continue, you continue each week to come up here and, and ask questions that you know answers to, that are just, it's not fair. The amount of time that our finance department, people put into this, and to nitpick on what a budget is and a budget is is insulting, and it's gotta stop. It's gotta stop.
It's not insulting to anybody.
It is insulting. It's insulting to me as your superintendent, it's insulting to our finance department. And I would ask you respectfully to stop, stop nitpicking the word. And I thank you for your time, I thank you for all the questions that you ask, but I just ask to please be respectful of the process.
I have been respectful, I've been asking the questions.
Mr. Walter, let's unkey your mic, please, and I'm gonna, gonna make a statement. This process, you have been on this board how long? This process is no different than any other year that has been done, and actually, it's been done in-
And I have been opposed for, for multiple years.
So, you voted against the budget? You voted against the budget last-
Been called a budget, yes.
But this is not the budget, this is proposed, it's the pro, it's the process we have to go through until the county commissioners actually give us a budget to work with. So, I'm not real sure why we keep having that discussion. But at the end of the day, all's been said, it's gonna be said, you've made your points, I'm gonna move on down, and then you can vote for it or against it. That's your prerogative as a board member, okay? But just so that we clarify for the audience, the viewing audience, and for those that are listening, this is what we have to do in the process to present this to the county commissioners to get- commissioners, to get our funding for Cabarrus County Schools, and you know that.
And it's an unreasonable ask, is what I'm saying. There's a policy that guides that.
Okay, noted. Mr. Farr?
Yes, I was just going to say, I've been here nine or ten years, Rob has too. Our capital outlay numbers have always been like this, and they've never been met, never been closed, so I don't know what's different. Maybe I'm just, it's all the same to me, it's all the same terminology, data that we've had every year that we vote on the recommended budget, so I don't know what, I don't know what's going on, but thank you for your work. As far as the robotics, I think we need to take a look at that, I'm in favor of that, but I know one of the comments they made last week, they compared it to athletics. I hate to have to disagree, but, you know, we got, we got folks working year-round in athletics for no money, for maybe three or four months' worth of a paycheck, when their spend, their sports are now are required to be year-round. I'll give you one example, football officially starts August the first. I guess they've been practicing since March after school, and they'll do, continue to do that till November, so yes, I'm in agreement with robotics, but at some point, we're going to have to look at stipends elsewhere, too. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Well, Ms. Herndon, I just want to say thank you so much for working so hard on this. I appreciate you guys taking a look at the VEX robotics, which is what we asked about last week. I'm happy that we're going to be able to come up with something for that. I just appreciate all of the hard work that the Budget Committee has done on this budget. I know that you, or I won't say budget, budget request that you are going to put towards, put forth towards the commissioners this Thursday. I know that you guys have worked very hard on this. I also understand that this request is important for us to continue to maintain that open communication with the commissioners, so that they understand what our needs are. We also understand as a board that they're not always going to be able to give us everything that we ask for, but it's very important for us as a board to make sure that the commissioners and the public are aware of the needs that we have in order to make this the best school system in the state. So thank you very much for all of your hard work, I appreciate it.
Ms. Carpenter?
Again, I want to thank you especially for the robotics, looking at that. Again, you did say y'all were going to, you know, look into the stipends of everything, and again, I think that is well overdue, because I know that, that first stipend was put in right when we put that, that in place. Again, I appreciate, and I think it's very important that we keep the process like it is, because I've been, I was on as a county commissioner, then I was on as a school board, and I know how important it is that we do like we're doing right now, letting everybody know what is the need of our board, because I know that when I was a county commissioner, we didn't really have that process, so a lot of times, things, we didn't know what the needs were sometime, and so things came out of the blue, and then we were kind of like, well, why didn't you tell us that was what was needed? Then the process started coming, the ten, the first, it was the five-year plan, then it was the ten-year plan, but those plans weren't there. So this is where all this kind of come in play. So we, they, we said, let, they, you know, the commissioners at that time, let us know what those plans are, so all this evolved. And so that's why it is so important that these things are done, and we said, it was said at that time, let us know what all the needs are. Now, we, you know, it's not going to always be funded, but we've got to know what those needs are. So I know how important this is, and again, I appreciate your staff and everybody putting all the work that's in, that's needed for this, but all these things need to be, and the transparency needs to be there, and I appreciate it, but I understand too, I know how it is, I know what a budget is, and I know what that is, but I understand it, and thank you so much.
Ms. Adcock?
I'll just say thanks, that's it.
I thought I was going to get a drink of water before I could speak again. Am I right?
She was quick.
She was very quick. So thank you for your hard work. I think we all know what a cumbersome process this is, it has been for years, we've all agreed on that, we look forward to recreating a process with you as our new CFO, but we do have to present the facts, you know, that, we are mandated by law to do that, so we've got a great working relationship with the county commissioners, you've had a great working relationship coming onboard, working with the staff, Dr. Kapicki has, there's been open communication, open dialogue, they have sat through our budget committee process, we have two board members that actually sit on that budget committee as well. I think the process, as cumbersome and as it is, and it is a lot of money, we do have to be transparent. Do we understand that this is not a request that's going to be honored for every, every dollar we ask for? Probably not, but we have to start there. Then it is the job for you to bring that back and to have that conversation with Dr. Kapicki, and to figure out how we disperse those funds and where they actually will be allocated, and to get the recommendation back from the superintendent as a budget recommendation at that point in time. So I think we need to be very clear to the community how this process goes. Would you like to speak to that any further?
No, ma'am, but I would again like to say to Carol Herndon, fantastic job, I appreciate your professionalism and your dedication to kids, and I thank you for that. And I also thank the board for the dedication to kids. We don't have to always agree, but I just want to be very clear that Carol Herndon's done a fantastic job on this, and I thank you very much for that.
So with all that being said, may I have a motion that the board approves the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three proposed budget request to Cabarrus County Commissioners as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I have one, I have six one with Mr. Walter as a no. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Herndon.
Thank you.
We will move to eleven point zero six for our twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four calendar resolution, and we will have Mr. Jay White to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. We submitted a, I submitted a board resolution as it relates to the Cabarrus County School System request for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four calendar resolution. I have not had a chance to get any feedback from any of y'all, so I don't know if there's any feedback you have based upon what I sent. What I did do is I wanted to pass it by Dr. Kapicki, as well as Dr. Probst, so that they could look over it. I believe that everything looks very good to them. There is one thing that, that I have not gotten a final yea or nay on, if I may approach, let me give you what I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Dr. Kapicki, I'm going to let you open up the discussion.
Sure. Just one point I'd like to make with the board. Over the last week, I was able to have a meeting with some of our TAs, our teachers, and our parents. I would say roughly twenty-five to thirty, and all the audiences, the parents were probably about fifteen, Dr. Probst was with me for those meetings. This was a topic that was brought up, and overwhelmingly, people supported this moving forward. Now, I will continue to ask this question as we continue to go out to the community and have our meetings with the community and get some feedback on that, but I can tell you, the initial response to this was positive, and people did support an earlier start. And we made it clear that, you know, that that first year would be a little bumpy because it'd be a shorter summer, but people seemed to understand that, and Sue Burns was also with us at that, and did a fantastic job presenting our calendar to our public, but the feedback was positive. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that and thank them.
Board members, I'll begin the discussion. Ms. Adcock?
I don't have any questions about it.
Ms. Carpenter?
No, I don't have any questions.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions.
Mr. Farr?
I'm good.
Mr. Walter?
On your yellow highlighted area, how much instruction in all time are we making up? Is there a number there?
That would, no, there is no number there. The reason why that's highlighted is that is a true factual statement that I believe encompasses one of the, one of the concerns that this board has relayed. I just wanted to make certain the language was correct, and this is one thing that I did not get a final approval by Dr. Probst or Dr. Kapicki. I think it is what the board wants to do, but I don't have a final number because I don't create the calendar.
It's just another reasoning, right? Is that?
Yes, it is a reasoning, that's what it is, and I believe it's a reasoning what the board would embody. I just was wanting to make certain the language was, was what the board wanted, that's the reason why I highlighted it. That was the one thing I had not got a final word on.
Okay. I don't have an opinion neither way.
Sir?
I don't have an opinion either way, it's just.
Okay.
Ms. Sandich?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Mr. White, I'm going to, either you read or I, I wanted to read this just for the viewing audience.
I can read it if you'd like.
That would be great.
Okay, so it's entitled Cabarrus County Board of Education Resolution to Move the Start Date of the Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four School Calendar, Whereas the North Carolina General Statutes Give Local Boards of Education Powers of Supervision Control of the, of local school systems, whereas local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of school system supervision, administrative powers with which local boards of education have invested, whereas North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash eight four point two, eighty-four point two, requires local boards to adopt a calendar requiring a start date no earlier than Monday closest to August twenty-sixth unless a statutory exemption authorizes an earlier start date and an end date no later than the closest day, closest Friday to June the eleventh, and I've encapsulated it calendar law, whereas the calendar law would require the Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four School Year to start August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three unless good cause exists and a waiver is granted, whereas upon a showing of good cause and the granting of a waiver, the earliest start date for the Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four School Calendar would be August twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, whereas pursuant to the calendar law, either start date significantly impacts students, families, and employees, including the following: prevents the fall semester from ending prior to the winter holiday, requires high school students to take the full, take the fall semester exams after the winter holiday break, negatively impacting test scores, denying fall semester graduating seniors from enrolling in college courses in January because college courses start before the fall semester ends, severely restricts the local Board of Education's flexibility in creating a calendar to fit the needs of the local school district, forces the local Board of Education to make up lost days during spring break and Saturdays, and whereas COVID-19 isolation and exclusion protocols adopted by the state forced the temporary closure of schools and additional flexibility is needed to make up for lost instructional time, whereas the North Carolina Legislature passed Senate Law Twenty-Twenty-One dash three, House Bill one ninety-six, requiring North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to contract with SAS Institute Incorporated to collect, analyze, and report data related to the overall impacts of COVID-19 on public school units, students, and families, whereas the overall findings were that COVID-19 negatively affected students in almost every subject, and some specific findings were that, on average, students made less progress during the pandemic than in previous years. Results show that there is a negative impact for all students, for all grades, for almost every subject except English II, and especially for math, fifth to ninth, science, eighth. Students who require, who returned to the classroom for face-to-face learning and were specific, were specific and targeted resources and supports were immediately put in place did better than students whose instruction was purely remote and who were physically disengaged from their school community, whereas the Cabarrus County Schools are dedicated to addressing each student's academic needs through support and targeting resources for their success, whereas the Cabarrus County Schools are dedicated to determining ways for each student's recovery and acceleration to overcome the learning loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic, whereas by allowing the Cabarrus County Schools to start the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school two weeks earlier encourages flexibility to reduce the impact of a late start has on students, families, and employees, enhances the best opportunity to reduce learning loss currently being experienced, and provides the best opportunity for each student to succeed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Education requests the General Assembly to amend the calendar law for Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four School Year by allowing local boards of education to start school no later than August nine, two thousand and twenty-three. Be it further resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Education supports an amendment to the current calendar law to empower local school boards more flexibility in the start and end date of the school calendar. Approved, adopted this, or adopted the blank day of April, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, any other further discussion or comments?
Hearing none. Dr. Kapicki, would you like to speak? I think just for a summary of the viewing audience over the discussion that we've had for the last couple of months, this would allow us the opportunity to, number one, align with the early college calendar, get exams in prior to Christmas break instead of after they return. So there was a lot of discussion about the pros that would take place in addition to the learning loss.
Right.
We are trying to address as well. So anything else, board members?
My name's spelled wrong again.
I'm sorry.
But secondly, where does it go from here? So we submit this to the state? Are they acting on it this year?
This becomes a part of our legislative agenda that we've talked about, our meeting that's going to take place, but this resolution needs to be passed by the board first, and then we will present it.
Okay.
Just like any other resolution we've done, okay? Is that clear for everyone? Yes.
May I have a motion that we adopt the Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Four Calendar Resolution as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So board members, that concludes our business for the night. We will remind the viewing audience that we have our next meeting on Monday, May the second, for our work session. So with that, may I have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A three, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A six.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, and a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and with that, we will say good night to our viewing audience and have a great Easter break.